I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, June 1, 2023 to order. Will the, will Ms. Ms. Jazz please take the role?
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Please stand and join me in saying pledge of allegiance.
Are you flagging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic which is standing one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on petitions and communications, community announcement. Trustee Schmidt?
Excuse me. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board is this Saturday, June 3, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee District 2.
Yeah, before we do that, I want to observe a moment of silence for our village employee's son who passed away. So can we have a moment of silence for that? Thank you. The GH2O Aquatic Center is open for the season with regular hours starting this Saturday, June 3. Stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, memberships, and more. Come relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or hang ten on the floor rider. Regular season hours are Monday through Friday from noon to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays from noon to 5:00 p.m. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Leisure Services Department. Positions include seasonal laborers, lifeguards, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357.
Trustee District 3.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by this Friday, June 2. Join a team of hard-working individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to community-oriented policing. Applications are available at Village Hall or can be downloaded from the Village website at www.glandalehighs.org/hr. There are, there is a mandatory orientation and a written exam on Saturday, June 3, at Mark Court Middle School. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Commission at (630) 909-5398. Join the Glendale Heights Police Department for Movie Night with a Cop held at Safety Town. On Friday, June 9, July 22, and September 15, starting at dusk, we will be showing family-friendly movies along with fun interaction with Glendale Heights finest. Join us on Friday, June 9, as we go to Infinity and Beyond with a Disney Pixar lightyear, Disney's Pixar's lightyear. Special thanks to Glendale Heights Library for sponsoring our Movie Night with a Cop events. For more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Ms. Jazz, please.
Village vehicle stickers are now on sale at Village Hall. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m., July 1, 2023, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on Village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding village vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000 or visit www.glandalehighs.org. Thank you.
Trustee Meritato?
Take your summer fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs' premier events. Glendale Heights Fest runs Thursday, July 13 through Sunday, July 16, at Camera Park. Enjoy the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival, along with exciting entertainment rides and fantastic food booths. Enjoy a dazzling display of fireworks at dusk on Sunday, July 16. Two major changes to this year's family-friendly event are the reduction of the event from five days a week to four days, and attendance must must use clear bags if you plan on bringing anything into Glendale Heights Fest. Be sure to look our Facebook page to stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest, or visit www.glandalehighsfest.com for more information.
Trustee District 5.
It's not here. Mr. Pojek?
Oh, you didn't say, you didn't say Pojek. I didn't know who you were talking about.
Who are you, District 5, right?
I.
Flag Day is celebrated on Wednesday, June 14, in honor of our red, white, and blue. The following tiffs are proudly displaying our U.S. flags are recommended by the National Flag Day Foundation. Hoist the flag briskly and lower it ceremoniously. If you display the flag overnight, illuminate it. No other flag or pendant should be placed above or at the same level to the right of the U.S. flag. Don't allow the flag to touch anything beneath it, beneath it, including the ground, water, or the floor. When your flag fades or wears, then typically after one year, replace it with a new one. Remember to dispose the worn flag at the village flag depository located at, in the circular island in front of the Village Hall, or proper military disposal. For information concerning the flag disposal, disposal program, contact me, Village Trustee Chester Pojek, at (630) 909-5310. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroder, District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the University of Chicago Medical Advent Health for a free medical clinic this Saturday, June 3, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. This clinic is free and open to the public, and it's there to help those who cannot afford health care insurance. Families and children are welcome. Services include dental exams, diabetes, eye exam, lab screening, primary care, and much more. For more information or to pre-register, please visit www.glandalehighs.org. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is proclamation. We have the following proclamations. A proclamation to proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ month. A proclamation to proclaim June 19, 2023, as June 10. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. We go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Anybody from public? Mr. Mike?
Good afternoon. I've given the floor to everybody here.
Anybody? None? Okay. New business. A month? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You have the concert agenda, Mr. Flint. Would you, are you, Village Administrator, please read the concert agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of May 18, 2023. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of May 18, 2023. Three, approval of the count's payable listing of June 1, 2023, in the amount of $3,778,442.95. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing professional Phase 1 engineering services for the President Street Surface Transportation Program, Street Resurfacing Project, West Fullerton Avenue to Armitage Avenue. A resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for professional construction engineering services for the 2023 MFT Street Program. Six, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2023 Street Program for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the asphalt seal coating project, multiple locations in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve concert agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move, will you approve the consent agenda as presented?
Trustee Mary.
Second.
Our discussion. Yes.
Are we going to get a list of the streets that are being seal-coated?
I'm not dealing with a sealed coat, I believe. Keith, please?
Who is?
I believe Keith, is it Keith or Dog?
I got it. The seal coating is going to be for the parks, so it's going to be College Park, Millennium Park, Heritage Park, Circle Park, Safety Town, and that's the total base bid, and then we're going to do both of the Public Works locations.
Trustee Schmidt?
Okay, so we forgot about Green Neck Park and Gerboto Park for resurfacing, or I don't get any.
This is just, this is just for seal coating. We're just seal coating.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Schmidt, please. You are second. Did you raise your hand?
I moved them.
Okay, Trustee Pojek.
Do we have, did we get a bid on all the seal coating?
Yes, sir.
Because I wasn't aware of it yet. Did we already discuss it? The seal coating, the cost?
Yeah, it was approved at a prior board meeting.
It was?
Yes.
No, no, this is, this is, we just went out to bid, and this is the bid award for the bid that we went out for.
Yeah. Is it current, or?
We just opened the bid maybe within the last couple of weeks.
Hmm, all right. What was the cost? Anybody know?
Yes, the total on that with the option, and the option does include both of the Public Works locations, $15,182.90.
All right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The concert agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 3. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item 2 to 3? Yes. Yes, Ms. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second, Trustee Schroder.
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item 2 to 3 is approved. Number 2, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI 12014 Ford F15 pickup truck, request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-44. Any motion for that? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
And Trustee Light?
Second.
Our discussion. Anybody? No? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-44 is approved. Number 3, an ordinance to waive bid, accept the proposal of imperial surveillance and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase and installation of 10 surveillance cameras at Camera Park. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-45. Discuss, I need motion. Trustee Siddiqui? Trustee Pojek?
Second.
Discussion.
First Siddiqui.
Yeah. Second. Trustee Pojek. Discussion. Yes, Trustee Light, and then Trustee Schmidt.
Quick question. One, is this going to be wired or Wi-Fi?
Well, it's going to go off. We actually have, it'll be Wi-Fi. It goes into our system that we have currently that's throughout the village, the water treatment plant, Sports Hub, the Civic Center. It's all in the same system, so we'll be able to monitor it 24/7. The coverage on it is excellent, so it covers the new spray pond, all the park apparatus, the skate park, the basketball courts, the parking lot, and a little bit into the old soccer fields just to the north of the parking lot.
Okay. Will we be able to use this also during Fest?
It will be awesome for Fest. So this will be in our command vehicle, playing at the same time. We're going to put a drone up in the air, too, so it'll be, you'll see a lot of different things. It'll cover our whole midway section of the band area.
Oh, that'd be great.
Trustee Schmidt, please. Yes, then Trustee Bear.
Two things. Number 1, I don't see any place on here for UPS. And with a system like that, UPS is, we got to have one. There's no, no doubt in my mind. And secondly, when you're talking about recording, will we be able to record in the command vehicle, the, these cameras, and play back from the command vehicle, or does that have to come back here?
No, it's off the same server, so the servers will keep the information. All that playback, we can get off on, anywhere we can get it. So right now, I can be on my computer in a squad and see the video from the village. Same thing will happen out there. You can do all your playback, it just saves in the server.
Okay.
Yes.
But we, Trustee Schmidt, we, we will find out about the UPS.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we, are we still going to need a park ranger in the summertime?
The plan is to still have one, we have it posted.
We're still going to have one.
Right now, I have it posted, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-45 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. We go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Please state your name and your address.
Yes, Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. Simple question regarding a new business under number 3. I think you answered the question already, but the reason for, to waive the bid is because we have an existing contract with this particular company?
No, honestly, it's to make sure it's up by Fest.
Two different things. So we, we had a contract with them for doing our command vehicle. We also have a contract with another security firm. We put them out to bid for both of them. This bid came $40,000 less than the other company, so it saved us a lot of money. Apples to apples, the system is actually better than the other one, too.
Are we aware, are there other municipalities that we have a, a track record to go off of?
Our own, so our command vehicle uses it.
Okay. And then the last question, can you at least state the cost of the implementation for this?
$70,000, that we've applied for a grant to the state to be reimbursed for.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from public? Yes.
I have two questions, guys. My first question is on the seal coating. Why did we only do part of the?
Can you please state your name?
Oh, Kim Darlin, 1053 Greenbrier, Chester.
Thank you.
So the seal coating's part of a program that we have every year. Last year, we did a huge amount of seal coating.
Okay.
And hit all the big parks. This year, we're hitting the smaller parks and the smaller village properties.
So this is what's left?
Yes.
Okay. Chief Pappas, are we part, and I mean we, the Village of Glendale Heights, are we part of a SWAT team, like a DuPage County SWAT team, or the big SWAT, or?
Merritt.
Are we part of it?
Yes, we have one member in the, as a SWAT operator. We have two who are crisis negotiators that are on the team.
Okay.
So we are a part of it.
So the big, the big SWAT one that goes from the border all the way to Joliet, or?
We did, not anymore. We had somebody who was in, it was called Weapons of Mass Destruction.
Okay.
The problem with them is that we were never used, so we took our officer out of that.
Okay, that's my question. And we put him elsewhere?
Yes, so he's, it's not a full-time position. So none of our SWAT, none of our crisis negotiators is a full-time position. They actually are police officers, and it's a specialty that they're in.
Okay.
Yep.
But we're part of?
Merritt.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, anybody else? Okay, exact concession, there is none?
Tell them we're also part of ILEUS.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Pojek, you have the committee.
I'd like to call this committee at a whole meeting on Thursday, June 1, 2023, to order. Will the clerk please note who's present?
So noted.
Does anybody have any additions or deletions? Mike?
Two of them. Traffic enforcement, and the second one is ordinances and resolutions.
Michael, could you repeat that?
Traffic enforcement, and the second one was ordinances and resolutions.
Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, here we go. Oh, Pat?
Is that, is that under appointments?
Yes.
Okay.
You want appointments?
No, Mike, Mike could take it.
All right.
Are you bringing up the?
No.
Okay.
All right, public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Mike Aniveros?
Yes, but I'll introduce myself formally, so for the record, so.
All right.
Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. Again, I played by the rules. I filled out the application. I provided it to Mr. Flint, forwarded to the mayor, and, and waited a response back on the opportunity to get a recommendation to be on one of the committees. What is the next step at this point, so I have a better understanding?
To best of my knowledge, it has to be, mayor would have to take care of that for you. He'll make the appointments.
Do we have a timetable when these are to occur?
We will be, we will be, at committee hall, there'll be discussion on it, so if you can just wait.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Kim Darlin, 1053 Greenbrier. Keith, this question is for you. And to understand, we have no concessions at the pool, is that right?
We don't have a concession stand that we're operating. We haven't done that since pre-COVID. Currently, we have machines that are out there, and in fact, we met with a new company. We're dealing with that currently to kind of up what we have out there from a machine standpoint.
All the other towns have concession stands. We have vending machines?
Yes.
That's a plan?
We also have had a major issue with staffing over the last few years, so I mean, it also goes into that.
Well, I agree with that, but you're at the pool all day, you got all these families and stuff like that, and there's nothing to give them other than a vending machine? Can we work on something like that, or that's just a no-go?
I don't have it in the budget to do it. Quite honestly, when we were doing it before, you would be surprised, people don't buy like they used to at the concession stands. They just don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to say, I feel the same way she does. I feel it should be considered, especially when the children are at the pool. They like ice cream or, it's not for profit, it's just for convenience for the children.
So in what we're looking at, we would have some sort of ice cream concession? That's what we're looking to get, is something that would put out an ice cream sandwich or something like that?
Not only ice cream, but I mean, I, I can remember buying hot dogs and things for the kids over there. I know it was before COVID, but COVID's over with now.
We can certainly look into it. As I said, I did not budget for concessions, and honestly, we have not had a successful, a successful concession program in many years. People just don't buy at the pool anymore. They don't. That, that's not what we've seen, is that?
All right.
Anybody else?
Isn't that one time, Keith, we had, we had vendors, and they, and they pulled out because they were making?
Nothing.
$10 for the whole day?
Yeah.
Wasn't worth them to have to, to be there?
Part of the problem that we're finding is that, you know, we open at 11:30 for our members 12 o'clock. People are eating beforehand, because it's cheaper than buying something at a concession stand. And it's, you know, the cost to get in the pool for a resident is $7, and non-residents 12. I mean, there's a cost now, it's not the same as it used to be. And when we ran it, honestly, it was not something that was a successful program for us.
All right.
Ed, Pope Wayne Avenue. Keith, I'm not trying to kick your butt, I know you hate, but that's really not fair to the residents, because not every program is supposed to make money, and the concession stand's one of them. I mean, you know, higher, how can we not find just a couple of kids that want to work the summer? You got, you got lifeguards and all the other staffing positions, and, you know, we already talked about the, the family pass thing, so you're, you know, you took care of that, but I just don't see how we could not have a concession stand, you know? Like, when I go with my grandson, we're there all day, you know, and I got to go, hopefully maybe find something on a Coke machine or an ice cream bar. I mean, you don't have to have 50,000 items on there, or I was going to mention what Pat said. What about, did you put it out for bid this year to see if any of the vendors, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of vendors, maybe sporties or somebody that's, you know, trying to be active in town, would have maybe wanted to try it for a summer?
We did not put it out for bid this year. We haven't put it out for bid for, I won't even guess, it was pre-my time, to be honest with you, the last time they went out for bid. That contractor actually literally left their equipment and stopped doing the business. So, I mean, I can look into it. Quite honestly, at this point, it's almost too late to get into the, I mean, it would take us a lot to get somebody in, get somebody hired. We have had difficulty in hiring staff. I am not up to the number of lifeguards that I want yet, although I am a lot closer this year than I was last year. So I mean, I'm, we're seeing some of that, and that might be something we look at in the future. We did not plan for that, though, for this year.
Well, like Kim said, you know, every other town is doing it. It's something we should, I mean, it just seems silly to not have it. I'm not trying to kick your butt here, but, you know, to, to not have just cokes and hot dogs and chips available, so that when they, if, if you're going to spend seven to 12 bucks to get in, you're going to spend the, the majority of your day there to get your money's worth, and then they have nothing. Can they bring food in, or are you allowed to bring food in?
We've, we've had the ability to bring some stuff in.[1771.14] We've had, we've had the ability to bring some stuff in. I mean, we're not going to tell people they can't bring a sandwich in if they're coming. But honestly, we don't see much of that either.
All right, well, I just thought that was interesting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Mike, you got one more thing?
Yes, I do, and I'll, I'll make it short. For, for once, I agree with you, Keith. I, and I know because he knows I run an association. We run to the same situation about staffing. It's very difficult to get staffing. Um, a lot of the other municipalities have more monies than we do, quite frankly, that are giving away gym memberships, bonuses at the end of term, uh, at the end of the season, things that we don't currently offer. Um, but at least what we do offer is bottled water, um, at the association. We do hand it out periodically to, to people out there. It's just as a, a token of, you know, gratitude for them coming out in the first place. Um, so I don't know what your, uh, limits are. If people can bring something like a small cooler that does have bottled water, does have a snack in it. But we certainly allow it to that degree. And it seems to be a happy compromise between the two. But I do sympathize with the village because everywhere I go, it's hard to staff. And the monies just aren't there to keep someone full-time just for that. So I do agree with you in this instance.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, real quick, what are our new ordinance with food trucks? Maybe we can get a food truck to stop by for an hour out of the day, you know, something like that. They can pull up, let them out, get food, go back in. Something simple.
So we, that's one of the reasons why the food truck is, um, something that's interesting to us. We have people that do, um, after-hours parties that, that's one of the options that we would love to be able to say, this is something to do.
Sure, it's an offer, at least get some. Mohammed?
Yeah, uh, for food concessions, I'm talking about the insurance liability wise. What are the?
I, I mean, that's something that we've dealt with in the past. You have to get sanitation certified for the people that work back there. All that stuff is something that can certainly be done. When we ran it the last time, we had hot dogs, we had pizza, we had pretzels, we had popcorn, and we had ice cream. Uh, we're gonna have ice cream, candy bars, and pop and water at this point.
Okay, and I have another question. What happened to the farmer's market?
So I'm glad you asked that today. You kind of set me up and you didn't even know it. So we actually talked to the farmer's market company, um, Jessica talked to them yesterday. Um, and we're going to present to you at a later time, um, probably to the Parks and Rec Committee, a proposal to do something going forward. Their recommendation was to not start now. And they also recommended doing it on weekends, which is not what we were looking to do this year. We wanted to tie it into our movies in the park. We kind of thought that would work. Um, the company is sending us information. The gentleman, it's a French market. The guy's in France. I didn't realize that. But, uh, this is the same company that does the Wheaton one. And he's gonna send us some information on how we can possibly come up with a date that might work for us that doesn't conflict with the others that are in the area and do something in the future. But they recommended not trying to start it at this point, but to do something in the future.
When you say future, meaning next year?
Next year.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Okay, other. I have a, Mike, you'll be next right as I'm gonna say something. Um, Mike Tavoric, your, your staff did a fantastic job. I had four issues. You really took care of me on that and the residents.
Thank you.
I wanna appreciate. Let them know that they did a fantastic job.
We'll do a let them know tomorrow. Thanks.
All right. Yeah, I'm on it. He's next. I'm gonna take care of Mike and then, well, we got, Mike, you're next. Traffic enforcement.
All right, are we doing, uh, later or is we doing discussion regarding?
I'm gonna leave the chief last.
Or maybe he can do the presentation and then you can do later on.
You're gonna do him last, chief?
Yeah. Whatever you wanna do, boss.
Yeah, you're, I called you.
On for me, all right.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, whatever you want. Um, I have here, um, first one, I, oh, traffic enforcement. I wanted to say, chief, kudos. I've seen a lot of more, a lot more traffic enforcement on North Avenue. Um, a, a lot more, and it's really been good. It slowed things down. Uh, it was always a freeway coming from the expressway till they hit Carroll Stream, and then they hit the brakes because they know what trouble they'll get into. That and, um, also the truck enforcement I have seen. Um, fantastic on that. That is, that is, that is great. I've heard some stories that came up. Um, I really wanna move along with this program and, and do what we can for these, the, the truck enforcement. Because I think it's, it saves a lot. I mean, it saves, it'll save lives taking care of the problem.
It is a huge, uh, hindrance when you have overweight and oversized vehicles out there. I know Darcy has worked tirelessly to get our portable scales for our truck enforcement, and that should be coming for them. We talked to Enterprise about getting a pickup truck to hold those scales in there, and this, that was just yesterday. So we're moving forward on that, and we have two officers that are doing outstanding job, and I'll pass it on to them.
They have fantastic. That's great. I would love to see it. Um, that's all I had for track enforcement. I learned to slow down, that's for sure. Um, ordinance and resolutions. This was pertaining to, um, committees and commissions. Um, a lot of these committees and commissions have put, been put together by ordinance and resolution. Um, I know we have a massive amount of not reappointed people. And we have blank spots that have not been filled. Some of these people, I don't even know if they're even around town anymore. Um, I'm looking to get all appointments taken care of. For, for executive staff, for, uh, assistant village administrator, and get these committees and commissions put together. Uh, they need to be taken care of. We have a, a massive amount of blank spots that have not been reappointed and need to be taken care of. Can we do a, a blanket reappointment for some of these and be done with this? I mean, I don't know what the board feels about like this. I know. The, the short answer is yes, right? For all the expired, uh, for all the expired residents who are on committees and commissions, we can bring to the board, if the mayor authorizes, and I don't, I have no idea where he's at, but if the mayor authorizes, the reappointment of all of these members of various committees at a future board meeting. And make a reappointment of all of them. Okay. Uh, but. They have to be appointed, reappointed first. Well, I know these were all put together in ordinance and resolutions, and the job has to be done. Um, I don't know how the board feels about this, but there's a lot of work not getting accomplished. Pat, you know, you've, you've got a few people that you've got on committees that, that aren't fulfilled, correct?
Yeah, I, we have at least, I'm gonna say fifty appointments that we need, not, not fifty people we need on committees, but we need them all appointed. I mean, it's been two and a half years. I mean, the mayor has one job to do and he can't even do that. We have, we have to make the appointments. The appointment's gotta be made. I mean, what is holding up all the appointments? We have volunteer, these people are volunteers. They're not even getting paid. And we can't get them on committees. Uh, what, what is the, what is the reason? Mayor, tell us what the reason is. Tell the board what the reason why you do not make appointments.
Where is the mayor, by the way?
Two and a half years.
Why are you not here?
Where is he?
Oh, he's, oh, he's.
Where is he?
He left at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, he left?
Well, he went somewhere. I don't know where he went.
So.
The mayor, Glendale Heights.
I mean, then the deputy mayor will take over? What is the?
Just continue this at the next meeting.
Chester's, Chester's the chair of the COW.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, we're gonna save that for the next meeting.
That's what I just said. We'll save this for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Everyone got copies?
No.
Yeah, Mary, that's on your desk.
It is?
Yes.
We have to, we have to get the appointments made. We have to get volunteers. I mean, I have four or five volunteers that live in my district. I can't get on committees. For what reason? Because they live, they live in my district? Or he don't like them? Come on. These are volunteer people. You know how, you know how hard it is to get a volunteer? We can't even get people to pay to work for us.
I think we should review these, this, everyone should review these. And cross all them off. Like, here's Tony Minigo. He's no longer with us, correct?
Well, that's police pension, right? So.
Is he on that?
Well, for, for, yes, for the time being. There are, what I think each of board member who's the chair of a committee needs to advise me is how many openings there are.
That, that's how it should be.
What I, what I don't know, and we put this, we put all these committee and commission members together, Tracy Walters did. Um, and she keeps them updated, but what we don't know is how many vacancies. And in researching all of the, uh, ordinances and resolutions that authorize these committees, it doesn't really say, the plan commission says seven. But Parks and, Parks and Rec Committee doesn't give us really a number. And we've kind of just been going off of a number. But if you have two openings on Parks and Rec Committee, right? That'd be information that we would like to know so we can fill those.
It's the, it, it's a very simple solution. Every committee has a chairperson. Ask the chairperson, how many people you need on your committee? I need three. Two left. I need three. These four people have to get appointed. You go to the next committee, you go to Parks and Rec, my committee. How many people do I need? We, we need a lot.
I think Pat.
And you go to every committee and you ask the chairperson, how many people do you need for your committee? How many people have to get appointed? It's very simple.
Right, and then we need names, right?
Don't even need names. I, I don't even know who's on half of these committees. I don't care.
I know. Well, as far as reappointments, we have all that, right? We, we need, I, I, we need, besides Mr. Anavares and one other gentleman who's put applications in recently, we need many more volunteers to put applications in that want to sit on committees.
Right. I don't care who's on the committee. That's the chairperson. I mean, if I, if I don't like somebody on my committee, I, I say, hey, mayor, you know, I really, this guy misses all these meetings, you know, we might just try to find another person. What's the big deal? Tell me. I mean, if, if it's a big deal, you, tell me what it is.
Pat, normally at the, what we normally did, did in the past, like the plan commission, everybody's there. We got a full board for the plan commission. We just automatically reappoint them for another three or four years, whatever the time limit was.
It's a five-year, it's a five-year appointment.
Five-year. And we have no problem there on so, on, on that particular plan commission. But some of the other ones, we have some doubt about. We need some people to fill up. Mohammed?
Uh, I mean, is it normal that the mayor can leave like this? I mean, what we are doing here, I mean, we are all talking about all those things, but it's useless. Because it has to be appointed by mayor and then with the board. So whatever you guys are talking, it makes sense, but.
Well, let's put this on hold till the next meeting. You guys have a chance to look at all of this, this list that was on your desk.
Like Chester says.
Hang on, I'm talking. You all get a list, go over, whatever you decide on. Bill, you have a couple of them. I have one. Mike, Pat, we'll go over this at the next board meeting and we'll discuss this.
All right, then I think we should adjourn the meeting. Yes.
No, we can adjourn this. We can adjourn the meeting.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you want to add it as an agenda item for the next?
For the next meeting.
Under appointments?
Yes.
General term.
Yes.
Yeah, we just keep an eye, we just keep an eye, every, we just keep an eye on every board meeting.
Wait, I have something.
Till we get somebody appointed.
I'd like to say something. You know, years back, the chairperson had a lot to say about what was going on in her or his committee. For example, if you were absent three times without even notifying you, we could disqualify you, and then the chairperson would say to the mayor, I need three people. I need two people on my committee, and that would happen. But right now, the chairpeople don't have the authority to do things like that. I think some authority has to be returned to the chair.
No, we have the.
The chair has the authority.
We have, we have, we have power to, to do that. I mean, I could do that. I could tell him, Keith, we need five people on our committee. But if you don't make the appointments, the five volunteers I have that want to be on, on, on my committee, don't get on the committee. I mean, we, I, I, we told them many times how many people we needed, but it, it doesn't happen.
Try and get people to, to work and, and volunteer. You can't get them to work even for money and try and get them for volunteering. That's another issue.
Well, we have really, we have really good people on our committees currently.
Right.
And we want to keep them. And they need reappointments.
Right, exactly. So.
Okay, we'll just continue this at the next board meeting. Okay, Chief Pappas, you have the floor. Take your time.
All right, we're gonna talk about the Flock camera systems and about the addition that you guys provided the village. So we're gonna talk about the benefits. The benefits for our Flock cameras is that we get real-time evidence. It captures vehicle details and the plates. We share intelligence, and there's hot lists. I'll explain what all these are as we go along. So first of all, real-time evidence. When there's an indication on a car, as soon as it passes the, uh, a camera, every one of our squad cars has a cell phone inside of it. So the officers will be notified if there's a wanted vehicle or there's some other indication of that vehicle, and they'll know that to go to that spot immediately. Second, the thing that's different about our Flock cameras than other license plate reading cameras is our license plate cameras aren't just license plate readers. They're vehicle readers too. So they identify the type of vehicle. Let's say it's a, uh, Black Dodge. They'll know you could enter a Black Dodge and you'll find it. So it's not just the license plates it picks up. It picks up every kind of vehicle. And I'll tell you why it's a good investigative thing in one second. Now, there's questions about ACLU. Is this right or is this not right? I know this question came up before. The reason that it passes through the ACLU is because we only retain data for thirty days. Another cool thing about Flock is we share intelligence. So there's a hundred and fifty-seven agencies that we share our information with. So here's what I'm saying. I can look at cameras in other towns because they give us access. Same as they have access to our cameras. My last slide, one of the last slides, I'm gonna talk about an investigation which started in the Village of Glendale Heights. But it's important that we share this information so we can catch the people who are doing wrong and protect our citizens. All right, so we have ten cameras that you guys, uh, let us get in last year's budget. Nine of them are fixed cameras and one of them is portable. They have been used in a hundred and fifty-five investigations. Fifty-four of those have led to criminal, uh, sanctions or arrests, which is pretty damn awesome. These are our current locations that we have the cameras as of today. So they're Bloomingdale and Dunman. The, the reason we picked these areas is you, we only had ten, so we had to try to lock off as big as locations we could with the amount of cameras that we had. So Bloomingdale and Dunman and Gladstone and Lakridge lock in that whole subdivision. So you can't get in and out of that subdivision unless you go through one of those cameras. Brandon and Vale and Gregory and Glenelg, same thing. You can't get between Bloomingdale and Glenelg and that subdivision without passing a camera. Evergreen and North, Bloomingdale and Shoreward, Second and Victoria Place, it's kind of the same thing off on the south side of North Avenue. And Fullerton and Camera Park, we put it there because Camera Park is our biggest park in town. I also had a portable camera on there. The good thing about that is if we have an investigation, let's say that there is a, a crew that's hitting banks or doing bank robberies. We can put that in front of our bank and it'll hit on that car that we know it's a suspect car. So that's why we picked up that camera. Now, with this year's budget, you guys have appointed or let us get fifteen more cameras. These are the locations for our fifteen additional cameras. Like I said before, the reason is that we want to try to block off as many, uh, areas, residential areas that we can to protect our citizens. So if you go down Glen, Glenstone and Ren and Bloomingdale and Gladstone, lock in that whole subdivision. The difficult part about Schmel Road is there's a lot of arteries that come off of Schmel. But most of them are blocked off by the, uh, primary roads that come off of Schmel. Same thing happens at Glen, Glenelg. So Glenelg Road, from Glenelg to, uh, Fullerton to North Avenue, most of the subdivisions on the east and west side of the roads are gonna be blocked in because of those camera systems. The main road that comes off of North Avenue is the last one on there, which is President and North Avenue. So if anybody's coming on North Avenue, they have to pass through the camera system. And remember why I said that, because that's what's gonna be important on our second to last slide. Okay, so you guys voted on cannabis dispensary, right? So our cannabis dispensary said, hey, listen, we have money for. So, our cannabis dispensary said, "Hey, listen, we have money for flock cameras. We could put 'em up at our business, but we already have a license plate reader. Here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna give the Village of Glendale Heights two more cameras." So, they gave us two more cameras that they're paying for, and that's gonna be at Army Trail Road at Cardinal and Army Trail Road at Oriole. So, we will have not twenty-five, but twenty-seven flock cameras throughout our town, which is a lot. All right, this is the reason. I said it before, and I'll say it again. We don't put our flock cameras under main arter- arteries, 'cause I don't really care if somebody goes from Chicago to Sycamore. I don't care. But as soon as they come on our residential area, I wanna know. On May twenty-second, I'm sorry, yeah, May twenty-second, on the west side of town, a crew from Chicago came in a stolen vehicle, and they stole one of our vehicles. We knew who they were. We are tracking them. And two, on last Tuesday, this Tuesday, I don't know if you guys watched the news, but there was a major incident in Joliet where they had a manhunt. Did you guys see this on the news?
Oh, yeah.
That was our stolen vehicle. Inside that stolen vehicle was three people from Chicago. One of them had a nine-millimeter handgun, and the trunk, they had a duffel bag full of AR-15 assault rifle magazines. Bad people. This is why we have our flock cameras, to protect our residential areas. Our officers will know as soon as somebody comes in with that wanted car. They picked up that stolen vehicle with a stolen vehicle. If we had a flock camera in that area, it would alert the officers. The area, I talked to Mr. Anavares about this. He lives in the area between Glen Allen and Bloomingdale. Our crimes have reduced a lot because as soon as people come in with a stolen vehicle, our squads are there. It stops crimes from happening, and when they do happen, we have the skills and the tools to identify them. So, that's why it's an excellent tool. So, thank you, guys, for letting us get those fifteen additional cameras. And with that, do we have any questions?
Chief?
Yes.
Is, is, probably a dumb question, but, I mean, could you use more of those cameras, or is that... Doug is laughing, but, a dumb question. You probably can use about five hundred of those, but...
We can, yeah, we can always use more, and it would be great to block up. I know I talked to Mr. Epstein. If we put, we only need one camera for Golf U, and it shuts down Golf U. So, can we use them? Yes, we can use more. There's different places you can get off of Schmel Road. The whole idea is that nobody can get, I believe, nobody can get into residential area unless they pass one of our cameras. That's the best thing. I'm hoping that we have businesses like Ivy Hall will say, "Hey, listen, we will put a camera up, let's say, um, off of Mill Pond and Exchange, that area." So, they pay for the camera. It has to go down that street before it gets to our residential areas. Now, we block off Bloomingdale Road. That's the whole idea behind it. So, hopefully, you know, it'd be great to have more cameras, but let's see if we can get some businesses to pay to.
I think.
You know what? Uh, now, first of all, when they buy the camera, I don't know how expensive it is, but is there a cost for maintaining it?
So, we pay an annual fee on 'em, and this is what I'll tell you. Our cameras, well, I'll tell you how much they are. Twenty-five hundred dollars apiece for each camera.
All right.
The city of, uh, um, Elmhurst, they did an other system, a different system, which only picks up license plates, not vehicle descriptions, and they're in the millions of dollars for their camera system. So, this, by far, is a better system. It's a lot cheaper, too.
And we got a discount for volume, right?
So, we went on a five-year contract, and we saved, I think it was sixty-five, I tell you, sixty-five thousand dollars by doing a five-year contract. So, we even saved more money.
Oh, great.
Because we had the ten cameras earlier, they let us use that purchase price and keep buying.
And reduced, actually, the purchase of the ten cameras down a couple hundred dollars per camera per year because of the volume purchase that we made, yes.
Great cost benefit.
Mohammed?
I mean, for any reason, I'm always up for, for these, and this is our great investment, I must say. Because if you divide twenty-five hundred by three sixty-five, it's around six dollar and eighty-four cents per day, which is nothing. I mean...
There, there, there probably is no better value
Yeah.
to try and protect the, the residents of town than these cameras. It's not gonna keep anybody from doing anything, but it certainly helps us catch them when they do it.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. We, we all see it. There's, there's no, nothing hidden here. Uh, Chicago is not a, Cook County is not a good place right now. People from Cook County are coming out here to commit crimes. I just told you the story. That's exactly what happened. You guys can look it up on the news. It's our car. Bad people have it, and they'll go anywhere for 'em. We had, uh, am I gonna get into the investigation?
Okay, Bill, you're next.
Uh, you talked about Elmhurst having a different manufacturer. Are you able, with a flock system, to access data from other manufacturers, or does it have to be in the flock manufacturing system?
So, flock, we can pick up all, only flock systems, but the camera system that they use, we can pick up through another computer, uh, option. And the system that they bought is kinda obsolete now, so, because everybody's going with flock. There's so many agencies in DuPage County that are taking flock. That is the way to go. You saw we have a hundred and fifty-seven, um, towns that we're sharing with, and that's just not the state of Illinois. That's outside of the state of Illinois, too. So, it reaches far.
Anybody else?
Is there a timeline for them to be installed?
They, well, they'll get 'em up before winter. That's the whole thing. We try to pick poles that are our poles. We talked to Rachel's team, and the, the poles that are ours are the ones that they can install on, 'cause we would rather not drop 'em in the ground, 'cause it takes longer.
Okay, no, no more questions? See, I saved the best for last, chief.
Oh, thanks.
I'm gonna give them a good one, real quick. Uh, when you say quantity discount on the flock cameras, what is that number before we can take advantage of that quantity discount?
So, they let us use the buying power from our first ten cameras. So, they said, because we went in the contract as we did, that's where they let us do it. I don't know how long ago I let us keep it.
We got, we got the...
That's what I'm asking. It's a private business. If I wanna be able to buy a camera that my company could give to the village, would we be able to take that money and then put it into a piggyback so we get to the quantity test, and we can take advantage of the price difference? That's what I'm getting at.
We probably could. So, we can, the question that, I don't know if it was on tape or not, but the question Ms. Ronavares asked if a private business or citizen bought the camera, could we get the same pricing that the village got? We can contact our agent or, or representative, and we can ask them that question, because that's what we're doing with the, the Ivy Hall cannabis dispensary.
Chief, I have one last question. What is the lifespan for these cameras?
They have a great warranty, so if something happens on 'em, they fix 'em.
Good. And, and Mary, to your question, the maintenance is on them?
The maintenance?
Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent. And they're solar-powered, too. They're nice.
All right. No more other questions? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.